And there may be others joining us over time. So I declare the this meeting of the Standing Committee on Policy of the CCSD. I ask it to come to order. And I see that we do have Aquarum, Quorum, all members are present. Welcome, everybody. It's nice to see all of your faces again. You know, it gets lonely here sometimes, so it's good to. It's good to be this. This is it's business, but it's also recreation a little bit too. So I'm very pleased. So to commence right into it. One thing Claudia has to leave early. So we're going to try to get through the stuff that she's particularly involved with before. Before 4:10, is that right, Claudia? 4:10 for you? Okay, anybody else have to leave early? Okay.
I actually, I do have to leave. I have another Zoom call at 4:15.
Okay, 4:15. Okay, that's our cutoff then.
Yeah, let's just finish at 4:15.
That's well, it wouldn't hurt. Okay, we'll, we'll do this. Okay, here comes the chairman's report. Brief and quick. Two policies I've sent on to the board. So hopefully we'll see them with coming up at the board meetings within the next two or three meetings. One is the change to the code regarding transfer, transfer development credits. Remember, we talking about the 50 feet contiguous street frontage? So that that's I sent that on to the board. It may take them a while because it is an ordinance. And so it probably an ordinance change may have to go through a whole set of stuff. But anyway.
For one word.
Set of stuff. But in any case, just so you all know that 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 went forward. And the other one that's gone forward is the the rather short one that we dealt with regarding reimbursement of Standing Committee members expenses. Welcome Crosby and Laura. And also I see Michael Calderwood here. I'm sorry. I'd like to welcome. Let's see. Two, three, two other items in my own project. I have the one which I haven't really done much with this month, but is ready to start. I'm ready to start on that a little more. Spend a little more time on it this coming month, which is just a matter of inventorying the existing policies that the district has. Laying them out against the CSDA form format as a way of seeing if there's anything missing and or. But basically, so it's an inventory coupled with a desire to see if this, if we have the universe of policies adequately covered. And I'll be working with Haley or some other person that John will assign to help me with this. The other thing which I spent most of this month on, and Ted, this is going to be coming to you now, probably tomorrow morning, is the purchasing policy. What I've done is I've taken the existing policy. Welcome Karen. I've taken the existing policy and reorganized it and reformatted it so that it comports with the CSDA organization and numbering system. That was one thing and that the effect was then to bring unrelated different parts of that policy together. Because it had grown over the years, so unrelated things were appearing in different spots. So it's basically re-repackaging it. That was the one thing that we did. Oh, and the other thing is as going through it, and this is something that we can, I think I finally found the term I'm looking for here. Separating between Board of Directors policies. That is to say policies that it is the purview of the board to establish. Differentiating between those and what I'm now going to call operational policies and procedures. Those are the things which are really under the purview of the general manager who is implementing the board policies. So in that purchasing policy, there were a number of cases where rather detailed procedures were being laid out, which are really properly in the, what I'm calling the OPMP, the organizational policies and procedures. And as we go forward, I think that's something to remember. While the board doesn't directly deal with the operational policies and procedures, it's nevertheless something that we can help out with, especially if we're asked to do so. So, so Ted, that's going to be coming to you. The document will not have the changes that you and I and Monique talked about. I'll, I'll put those in after you've seen what I've produced so far. But for you, what I'd like you to do is just proofread it, make sure it makes sense to you and the organization makes sense. And then you and I will meet and formulate series of questions and concerns and then to take up with Pam or whoever else John Weigle would would recommend that we look at. And that's, that is the substance of my report today. So and again, very happy to see you all here. Before we commence, do any of you have any questions regarding the president's, the chairman's report? Questions, any clarification? Anybody in the world out there? Do they have any? I see Gordon, you have a question or clarification. Can't hear you. Still can't. There you, where did he go? Try again, Gordon. Still, no, still, you're still muted.
Unmute.
There he is.
There you go.
Got to find what button there on the window. Appreciate your involvement with the purchasing agenda policy and your input there. I think at one time you mentioned the question that you needed another person to be involved with that.
Are you volunteering? I mean, yes, yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, because I'd like to be in tune with that with Ted, Dan, if I can help out.
Oh, excellent. Oh, great. So, so thank you, thank you, Gordon. So Ted, our new subcommittee basically consists of you, me and Gordon. And once I get you guys going, I think I'm hoping I can kind of step out of it. But to try to get you, you know, give you some guidance to get started, you know, and then. But yeah, no, that's great. So the three of us can gather. So I will send you a copy of the, of the, of my little magnum opus there. And, and so, and then you guys can get back to me with the feedback on that and we'll schedule a meeting from there. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions, clarifications, comments? And then moving on to the the subcommittee reports, the ad hoc subcommittee reports. First, we have the Committee on District Policies Regarding People Experiencing Homelessness. And I think, who wishes to speak? Who's the lead on that one or who would like to talk?
Well, I'm the lead, but I still got input from Claudia. Leslie on this. So I was going to mention my part that I'd been involved with was getting in tune with an existing organizations up in let's tell you where up in the San Jose area. The, they have up to 9,000 people that they're taking care of in that. And so I've been going online trying to find out the different agencies that are involved, but I haven't found out the main person that sort of started it and figured out how to get it to come together. But that sounds like quite a lot of work that somebody did to make this work. And so hopefully I'll work on that this next month to get more feedback. So we're sort of still spinning our wheels a little bit on, at least on my part. And Leslie was trying to develop something with the grant part of it. Did you come up with that?
Yeah, I am. I had, I did a whole search on grant funding, even though we don't have a platform for grant funding to fall on right now. And I've come across almost 18 different grant programs we could qualify for, for ranging from $5,000 to up to $25,000. Mostly for Creek Habitat Restoration Programs. But that kind of encompasses a whole program of removal, cleanup and replanting. And it's all because of Santa Rosa Creek. So that's kind of the focus area we use is the flip control district that the agency is. The other thing I wanted to bring up to the group is there's attached to the the actual budget for 2021. Facility and Resources has a wish list. Everybody, every department has a wish list. And in the back of that wish list, Facility Resources put in a container. They want a storage unit, a $20,000 storage unit for the homeless materials. I appreciate that that's the wish list. That's what everybody's asking for. They may not necessarily get those items. I want to read to you the research I've been doing on storing of homeless stuff, homeless material, their possessions. Right now epidemic typhus is on the rise. Epidemic typhus comes from human body lice. It's from the fecal matter of human body lice. So handling the actual possessions of homeless people can be quite dangerous. And what County of San Luis has been doing is prior to installing the material into these storage units or containers, it's actually cooked in an oven, not unlike a curing oven for wood products, which actually kills the body lice. So the idea that we're going to have staff who are going to have equipment here to accommodate this process and program is for me personally reinventing the wheel. Well, we already have a resource available to us in the County of San Luis. It's being paid, by the way, with grant funds and state tax dollars to go ahead and support this program. We could do an MOU with the San Luis Obispo Health Department and use their service center and their storage facility and their resources. So our, our population of homeless is not so large that we could not butterfly that program into this. All we would have to do possibly is transport. That may be the only issue, not homeless, just their possessions once through containers. But this idea that we have it stored in this container for 90 days with a staff member on site all the time is, is, I don't know if it's beyond our ability to do, but we would have to buy more equipment, not just the container. We'd have to buy that actual curing oven as well. So there's a lot of issues here involved with handling of this material. And it is epidemic in Los Angeles and San Francisco. So we're right in the middle of this type of epidemic that's happening of both Skiboro and in San Francisco. And it will eventually touch on our shores at some point as well. I volunteered at the homeless center. I worked in the laundry for like six months and then had to quit because I couldn't handle it. It was quite intense. And I saw a lot of human body lice on clothing and on material there. So these are healthcare issues we have to address and be aware of because we don't want Carlos or his staff getting sick. And it is sticky with it. So that's then research I've been doing on the actual management of the in-house program here in town and the management of program in town, San Luis, and the grant funding that would support either the transport or the storage capabilities.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Gordon, do you have any additional input from Carlos or?
Is Carlos here?
I don't see him here. No, he's not here.
He thought he told me he was coming. I just wanted to say that, you know, this group that that he, I'm trying to encourage him to actually be an official member of. I had it down his heels slow, but he had another name for it. And I've forgotten it at the moment, but I did talk with George Solis about, well, it's almost two months ago now. But they meet on the first Thursday of the month. And they started meeting, I think in March or February, they started meeting and they quit for a couple of months and then they're back on track. So I hang on, so they, they met in February and they didn't meet again until June. And so they've only had two meetings and now they said they must had third because they must had a July meeting. And I think that that Carlos went to that July meeting, but he didn't send me, I asked for a report and he did not send that to me. So we'll have to continue pursuing that. And maybe if it's a Zoom meeting, maybe one of our, one of our ad hoc committee members could, could attend that meeting so we could report next month.
Excellent. Okay.
Yes, we're still moving that along for next week to give you more feedback on what capabilities we can do. And still, who is a good prime candidate for maybe supporting that activity unless the board decides to open up Carlos's activities to do it, something that we don't suggest is the right direction.
Yeah.
At least I, anyway. Yes, Claudia?
However, when I was talking to George, he said that volunteers, there's a lot of things that the volunteers can do besides handling syringes. I mean, so we have been discounting volunteers. We've been telling not to do anything. But if we, if we talk to this group, we can find out what volunteers are able to do that are within safety guidelines. Because I know we've got people that'll help.
Good, so I think there's progress being made here. Leslie has her hand up, I see. I think I saw a hand, Leslie, was that you? Yeah.
Didn't the board address this last year? The board addressed the volunteer. There was an NCAC meeting that talked about this, that they were very adamant that they were against having volunteers involved because of legal liability issue. I agree that there is an avenue of volunteer support here and that all these agencies do rely heavily, but there's a legal issue here involved as well. And didn't the board address this? I don't remember. I just remember it was brought up for the NCAC homeless forum.
Well.
You were.
What I remember is yes, we did address it, but that's one of the reasons that you're looking at this, actually. What we did was we, we said, please don't go out there on your own and start because of that very issue. But I think as you've explored this thing more deeply, I think if the committee is able to recommend, you know, some specific things that the board might be able to support, I would suggest that, in other words, I would go forward with that and see what, what happens. Because I think, for example, if there were a set of guidelines for volunteers and that there might be, that might be a way of protecting the board from legal liability. At any rate, not to get too deeply into that, I just want to encourage you to keep going forward. Remember, Rome wasn't built in a day, and this is a very complex issue. I'm not at all surprised that as you dig more deeply, the more deep it gets, as it were. So thank you for that, and we look forward to your report next month. And if you guys need assistance zooming, if you, if, if you want to meet for more than an hour and you don't have a special account, if you'd contact me, I can go ahead and set, as we did once before, set up your meeting and, and then dedicate somebody else as a host. And then I simply put my computer to sleep and let you guys do your business. So if you need help zooming, please let me know because we, I can do that. I have a, we can. I have a separate account that we can use, should that be something like. So I just want to offer that to you. I'm very pleased at the way things are going here. Moving right along, we have the disaster preparedness, and I believe that is Ted. Any, any word on that one? Are we still kind of waiting on the other?
That's mine.
I'm sorry.
No, that's, yeah, that's Gordon.
Yeah, I was trying to still put together the different organizations that are appropriate in our community and other areas. And the main thing I was trying to work with is Chief Hollingsworth in his Phase Two. Tried to contact him a couple of times this last week or so to see how he's progressing. And he may be involved with other things that, or he's completed it and hasn't, could be in the loop yet. So I'm still trying to get feedback there to see what he's done and then see how that would relate to other organizations. So the moment I have to hold off on that till next month and get a better view of what's involved there.
Oh, great. Well, thank you, Gordon. Yeah, any questions for Gordon on that? All right. Moving forward to the Subcommittee on Conservation and Ethics. I think Gordon, is that you again, I believe?
Yes, that's lucky me. I've been promoting this obviously as a for two or three months now, obviously trying to put together things that made sense. And we tried doing it with the CCSD board and they were not pleased with the definitions that were presented at the time. So I've been working with the different organizations online here to find out which ones are involved and what their commitments are to whatever areas they're responsible for. So I put together a list and I've got a little over a page now broken down by the different organizations. And then I was going to get into the another group that has the history of Cambria's past of what people were thinking of 10 years ago, because we got another census coming up and how that is relating to where people were interested in going. So if it's still valid, I would put that together by next month to see if we can present this in the committee stage to forward it to the board.
Okay, well, thank you, Gordon. John?
Just a matter of labeling Committee on Conservation and Ethics. I think we mean the ethics of conservation because ethics as a standalone is a broader topic than Cambria. So is it the ethics of conservation? Is that what we're talking about?
Sounds like, Gordon, how would you answer that?
Well, this is what originally started with the Code of Ethics. It's the board and others that came on committees have to say that they're aware of. And my point was that they're not aware of a lot of things that should be concerned about Cambria. And what I called it was a legacy or things that would keep it in the condition of right decisions of expanding, you know, like water resources and buildings and other areas of interest that some people have different directions on. And that's what I was trying to at least get someone to be aware of, what those ordinances or thoughts were.
Okay, so, so it is the, the CCSD Code of Ethics seen through the lens of conservation.
Right.
Yes, yes, I think that, yeah, thank you. That's a good clarification. But Gordon, I think that does sort of describe because it is the conservation part is what we're talking about conflict of interest or other forms of breaches of ethics as much as we're talking about the board's custodial function, I think, probably something like that anyway. So looking forward to, it should be an interesting meeting next month. So looking forward to that. Let's see, we are now, any further questions for or clarifications from committee members? Yes, yeah, Ted.
Gordon, the scope of this policy that you're working on, when we talk about conservation, are we talking of what, what areas of conservation? I'm assuming the environment, of course, but any other areas pertaining to?
I presented this once two, three months ago in a format as a number six, I think, on the complete list of organizations, but no one wanted to bite into it that they knew about them. So I got stuck where I got to back up and, and detail sort of what those would mean to the direction that people should be considering when they're making choices on the board. So there is a list on the.
Excellent. Let's see, I think we'll move to public comment at this point because at that, the, the public then can comment about any of the committee reports because they're not really agenda items per se. So Haley, at this point, I think we're ready to take our official public comment. And members of the public, remember, this will be for items that are not on the agenda. But I think it would be legitimate to, if you wish to comment on the, the subcommittee reports or on the chairman's report, I think that would be in order. So Haley, do we have any public comment?
I have no written public comment at this time, but I see that Elizabeth Benhausen has her hand raised.
Okay. Elizabeth, would you please go ahead and mute yourself and speak?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Director. I want to say just in response to what you just said, I had no idea that there was no public comment on your report and the ad hoc committee report. So it would be helpful, I think, for those of us who are members of the public if we could get a quick reminder at the beginning of your meetings where you consider public comment astutely needed. But I want to comment on that last thing about conservation and ethics. As you know, I taught graduate school ethics, social policy for quite a few years. And I find one of the concerns I have here in town is that conservation is construed largely by individual actions rather than a matter of the ethics of conservation policy. And I think that we can all flush our toilets less often and only people in our backyard will be upset. But there's a whole nother issue about how we evaluate ethically the levels of water usage in this town. And that is not simply a matter of public, of individual actions, whether tourists or residents. But it's a whole question of how we evaluate patterns of usage over the years and availability in the aquifer. And my favorite theme these days, and it came up in John Lewis's funeral again this morning. My favorite theme these days is the climate crisis. And how we get the Board of Directors, as well as all the rest of us, to look carefully at the import ethically, or if you like the word better morally, I don't care. If you look at this question from the perspective of right and wrong of ethics. And that is a huge problem in this town as well as elsewhere. But I would like some real clarity from this committee on what exactly it is they're looking at, because I must confess, I'm a bit baffled. We tend to get into the evaluation of far too many others doing something before we have clarity about the objectives that we would like to obtain here in town and agreement on that. So I thank you very much, though, for taking it on. I have every confidence that Mr. Heinrichs will do excellently and, and guide posting and, and working on this. But I would like much more discussion by this, at this Standing Committee, as well as the Board of Directors, as to what constitutes conservation in Cambria, always a big fight, and what constitutes the appropriate ethical guidance for Cambria. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. You raise an interesting point, and that gives me an idea before we go forward. I would like to, it is entirely within, as my reading of the Brown Act. If one of our ad hoc subcommittees wishes to meet with members of the public, there is nothing to prevent them from doing that. And in this particular case, I think it might be quite useful if the subcommittee would consider perhaps publishing and calling for a meeting with the public. I'll be happy, I can, I can, I can host the Zoom part of it if you should so desire. But you, I encourage the subcommittees and the members of this committee to engage the public in any way possible. In this case, Elizabeth is probably a very good person to be talking to in these issues. And there may be others out there who have a very good handle on these issues. Similarly, with the homeless issue, I think there are probably interested parties out there. It might be that that subcommittee at some point might wish to have a, a public meeting. And as there's nothing wrong with that, and it's, I'll do everything I can to facilitate that, should you desire it. So I just wanted, and I thank you, Elizabeth, for your point. I think it's very well taken. Any other public comment at this time? This will be for items, either the, the committee president's report, chairman's report, subcommittee reports, or items not on the agenda. No further.
Done.
Yes, oh, yes, Gordon.
This one comment is you're suggesting reaching out to the public. Some of these things were supposed to be on a townhouse meeting that we never cut together to do that. We have been shirked of our duty with the board not proposing some of these things to push forward and get more public input. But I'll get more involved with that if that's the way you want to pursue it then. Thank you.
It's, yeah, as a board member, again, I don't want to take too much time, but as a board member, anything I'm only speaking for myself, anything that gets us more input from the public, I think is worthwhile. I don't necessarily agree with every, but I can tell you that people, so many people have brought up stuff that I either never thought of or brought angles which I didn't think about. So it's extremely useful and it's a good avenue to get the public involved. John, are you, are you talking to us or are you talking to somebody else in the room?
John? I was talking to someone else.
Okay, sorry. It looked like you were trying to speak. I'm moving right along. So we've got the public comment, we're now moving to the consent agenda. And this is to approve the June 19th special meeting minutes. Do we have any, is there any changes or additions to the, to the minutes as they are printed?
Volume went down.
Say again? Okay.
Up to meetings as written.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? Somebody, don't all speak at once. I think that, who, who is that? Oh, here, it looks like Ted has got his hand up. Would you like to second the motion, Ted?
Sure.
Cool, moved, it moved by Gordon and seconded by Ted to accept the minutes as written. Is there any further discussion on that? All right, let's, again, just a wheel, let's do a, Haley, let's do a roll call vote, just so. All right, let's, again, just, we'll, let's do a, Haley, let's do a roll call vote, just so be totally, completely upfront with this. So Haley, please say call the roll.
Would you like the secretary to do it or me? I wasn't, I wasn't.
Oh, yeah, right. No, let's have you do it. That way it leaves the secretary free to tabulate as it goes.
Okay. Committee member Key?
Aye.
Committee member Harmon?
Abstention, I wasn't there.
Committee member Nixon?
Aye.
Committee member Heinrichs?
Aye.
And committee member Richards?
Aye.
The motion passes for four to zero, one abstention. Moving right along, let's see. Okay, we're into regular business. And for this, if you don't mind, if I, if you would all agree, I'd like to move item A, which is the email retention and our records retention and email management. I'd like to move that, I'd like to deal with items B and C first, if that's all right with everybody. Mainly because we, Claudia has got to leave early and we're probably gonna, anyway, do I have your agreement? Is anyone object to changing the order of business?
I'm with me.
Okay, no objection. Was there an objection? No? Okay. All right. So we'll start then with item B, which is the discussion and consideration of the CCSD policy and procedure for filling a vacancy on the Board of Directors. And I think everybody should have that in their packet. And for the folks present here, I presume everybody's had an opportunity to see that. If not, I can share my screen and put it up. Does anyone actually need it on the screen? Yeah, Claudia?
Can you put it on the screen?
Hang on a minute. Give me just a minute. I can do exactly that.
I copied, I copied the agenda into Word and it's harder than heck to try to find anything in there, so. Change the format.
Okay, let's see. So we're what, the, where is it? Just looking for it here. Here it comes. Okay, let me see if I can make that bigger. Can everybody see that? It's a little bit small. Oh, I need to share my screen. By sharing here. Oh, I am sharing. Am I sharing? Yeah.
Nope.
How's that?
Don't say anything.
Not yet, okay.
There's something working.
No, let's see. I don't know what you guys are seeing. Are you seeing just, are you seeing my, just the, the? Oh, here it is, wrong one.
Yep, I'll say it's a different view there.
Yeah, draft five.
Make it bigger. Is that all right?
Okay.
Okay, now I need to do something with my, there we are. Hold on a second, trying to get my, get you guys big enough so I can see. Okay, so let's see, I guess, John, maybe this would be for you to present.
Well, Ted and I. Based on, is it, it's Gordon and I get confused.
Me too.
Work on this one, so.
Okay. Well, based on discussion of an earlier draft at the last committee meeting, we attempted to take that input into consideration and redraft the document as you see before you. And so I think, or should I say, I hope that, that the sections of the document that received considerable discussion at the last meeting have been revised to reflect the conclusions we reached. And in fact, it wasn't just casual conclusion. We actually voted on, on the direction the revisions should take. And again, then I hope that this, this draft does show that.
Thank you. Let's see. I don't know quite where to begin on this one.
Well, let me just say that the first section hasn't changed. The first section reflects state code or state regulation related to the issue. It is procedures to supplement policy, blank, 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 which we haven't numbered yet. Those, those procedures are the, have generated the discussion.
Okay, let's see. I only had one question about, it seemed to me, what you've done here does reflect pretty much our earlier discussion. I had one question I just noticed as we were reading. You'll notice the last paragraph on the first page, we're dealing with the statute here, where it's talking about if the number of remaining directors falls below a quorum. This is really a question for council, so I don't think we can answer this today, but I thought I'd at least bring it up. It appears from this paragraph that whether that the, the remaining board members have at the discretion to ask the board to appoint another member so that they can have a quorum. But it looks like it's discretionary, which then implies that they could, in fact, appoint a replacement without having a quorum. So that's probably an area that we need clarification from the attorney on that one.
Well, I would say so because the language that's there is just taken from code, so.
Exactly, yeah. And, and, yeah, there you are. That's probably the source, that could be the source of number of interesting.
Last time, that paragraph, is that a new paragraph?
Yeah. Comment I have.
And all the red and the blue colors. Then we wiped out everything.
So for the other sections, the primary areas of change from the previous draft, we've set upon the 12 months as, as a cutoff for drawing from the previous election. And, and then the second area has to do with the selection process itself, if, if the vacancy occurs after 12 months. And then you've tried to capture language that, that describes the kind of process that we had agreed to. And, and then, of course, ultimately even that process could end up in a stalemate. And so the final reference would be if that were the case, it would go to the Board of Supervisors, which is back into statute.
Any comment from the, our questions from the committee? Yeah, Claudia?
Is there provision in here for a special election?
Yes, I should have said it. If there's stalemate, well, first of all, the board can always call a special election. But if there's a stalemate, the choice is the Board of Supervisors appoints or there's a special election.
Yeah, yeah, the, the board does have the discretion to go immediately to, to ask the Board of Supervisors. I'm looking at the first, third paragraph of the first page where it says if the board decides to appoint. So they have the option of deciding or not deciding.
Right. It's expensive, but the board can always have a special election if they want.
Let's see.
Don, Don, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Crosby.
This is on that section about if the vacancy occurs within 12 months using the results of the past election. You might want to consider putting in some sort of a minimum requirement, like a minimum number of votes or something like that. Because potentially, if you had a very lightly contested election, you could have a second place person who only got 10 votes. And if you follow this procedure, they automatically become a director even without real evidence of public support. So I mean, I don't exactly what the answer is, but I think you need to put something in there to make sure that you don't have an oddball case where somebody ran, got a couple of votes, and, you know, in six months he's a director. Does that make any sense?
Well, it does. Although I, personally, I tend to agree with you, Crosby, that came up in discussion at the last meeting. And, and there was no conclusion about what, what that threshold or cutoff would be. And so the conclusion at that point in time was, no, we just, we haven't. And in fact, I won't repeat the example we gave. But the example, but the example we gave, we said, some of us said, well, that's a good, that would have been a good person.
No, no, I was at that meeting as well. No, I understand that the past discussion, I'm, I'm saying it still, it still bothers me that, that there's not some minimum qualifications written into that procedure.
Okay.
Well, yes, of course, at the same time, let me just say, you know, this committee will recommend policies to the board and the board can also amend this as well.
Oh, yeah. Let's see, any, let me, further comment? Yeah, Laura?
Don, okay, I want to, I have to agree with Crosby here because it wasn't only the candidate that you were speaking with. There was a couple of other people. And I won't go into names, but you know, if you get, like you get 10 votes or 40 votes or something like that, which has happened in past elections, if you look who we would be having for a director. So it seems like it's a pretty important rectifier to at least mention it again.
Thank you, Laura. Yeah, Claudia?
I, since you brought this up, Crosby and Laura, what, what number would you suggest? And what would be a minimum amount of votes in order for the second in line to take over a position? Am I muted?
No, you're not muted.
No. We're thinking.
You gotta remember that the elections will be two people and three people when they have the election. So it would be variable as to how many people run, as to what that number would be. There may be three people running and three, so there wouldn't be a fourth person. There might be people running.
I'm not advocating for changing the wording that exists, but if, if we were to change it in that direction, I wouldn't use a number, I'd use a percentage, but.
Right.
But, but I'm not advocating for that.
Before we get too much back and forth, let's make sure I've got all the commentary from the committee before we, just a moment, Karen, and then I can get the committee first. Anybody else? I'm trying to play the back and forth, so I'm watching my watch here. Yeah, so Karen. Oh, wait, wait, not Karen yet. I need to let Leslie in front of you and then Karen. Okay, Leslie.
So what's the number? I mean, everyone says we should assess a percentage or number, but we haven't really heard that. So I think it's hard to go forward without having a suggestion on what do you think is an appropriate percentage or number or whatever else here. That's a sticky wicket.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Karen, please.
Okay, I think I'm the one who brought that up at the last meeting. And I got kind of jumped on because both of the two very bottom vote getters would have been good directors. However, I think the fairest way to do it is probably a percentage and possibly someone who got at least 10% of the lowest number the person who actually did get elected got. Would that work? So like, if you had three positions filled, whatever the bottom vote getter of the position that got filled got at least 10% of that. We have, we have a couple of people who regularly go in on the last minute, sometimes write in candidates. And yes, I agree with Leslie from last meeting, both of them would be good directors. But in agreement with Crosby, they did not get a real outstanding number of votes confirming public desire of them being on the board, so.
Okay. Any other, thank you, Karen. Any other comment? I have my own comment, but let's get everybody else first. Gordon?
I was thinking more like 20% category, but it depends how close you want to be.
Anybody else? How about this then? My turn now. How about 10% of total number of votes cast? So if it was a two-way election and let's say you had 3,000 registered, I mean, 3,000 registered voters, each voter votes twice because they're voting for two, that would be 6,000 votes. 10% of that would be what, 600? Or 20% would be 1,200? I think 10 is probably where you have. Does that, how do you all feel about that?
Yeah, given that, given the numbers that, that we experience in these, in these elections, yeah, I don't, I think 20% might be a little high. I'm, I'm okay with 10%. And again, I mean, you know, we could put this in here and then the board.
Twice the number of people that voted, or I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, Crosby and Laura, you need to mute yourselves when you're not talking. Yeah, Ted.
So I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with 10%. I mean, I think we're getting into a kind of a stickly area, but, but yeah, I mean, you're talking 600 votes. It would make sense. I mean, that's, that's, that's a significant number in our elections.
Okay. Yeah, I just think what we need to do here maybe is let's go paragraph by paragraph. So right now we're dealing with the third paragraph down on the second page, one, two, three, fourth paragraph, procedures, no. Where is it? Here it is, first, second paragraph, sorry. Okay, so if we can add words to that effect, 10% of votes cast.
Well, if we did that, it would read, it could read, blank, 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 shall fill a vacancy by appointing the candidate from the last scheduled election who had received the greatest number of votes behind the candidate who won, who won the election, comma, provided that the candidate, that candidate received at least 10% of total votes cast.
Yeah, that works, that works. So yes, John, if you could add that, that would be good. Rather than take this as a bunch of separate motions, if I see everybody nodding their head, that, that particular one is by unanimous consent?
Yes.
I, leave it for our English wordsmith there.
I will say, I just, I, in a way, I, I thought it might be kind of nice and it would serve some of those folks right who, who really object to the process and so they don't register and they end up getting 10 or 20 votes. It'd serve them right to get on the board.
Anyway, there is that.
So, but anyway, so moving on down to the next paragraph, procedures for board interviews of eligible applicants. Any modifications or commentary on that? Let's take the committee first and then the public. Give everybody a chance to read it. Okay. Are we all good? Committee members first, they look good. Any members of the public wish to join in? And Haley, you'll need to let me know because I can't see blue hands on my screen anymore.
I do not see any members of the public that wish to speak at this time.
Okay, so that paragraph passes unanimously. Moving to the next, procedures for board selection of appointee or appointees. This is the one talking about the ranked choice voting. So any, any questions on this? Or comments? So from the committee first?
You know, I, we, I'm, I'm not a mathematician and I'm, and, but I, I think we tried to capture a process that, that was cited from several other documents, so.
Yes, and it looked to me, if I may comment while everybody else is reading it, I reread it and it looked clear to me. I, I thought I understood it, so let's make sure that everybody else understands it. It looks good to me. At first I wasn't altogether clear of the earlier edition, but I think you, whatever you've done here, it seems, I don't, I think I see how it could proceed.
Good.
Area where we might get a little issue, I think we should leave it as it is, but I think council may have something, is the issue of secret ballot. Because ultimately, because it's a Brown Act issue, you always have to be able to see how the directors vote. But I do like the idea of secret in the sense that one director cannot see what another director is doing prior to having the ballots evaluated. Let's, I would, I would leave it there and see what council has to say about it.
Yes, that actually came up in conversation at the last meeting and the consensus was to use the word secret. But I don't know the legality of that either, so.
Yeah, I just thought, let's see what happens on that one. Yes, Leslie?
Okay, so the secret ballot, the situation on that is from the directors. You can do it from the directors, but it has to go on record in the CCSE office of who voted for what. So that's the difference of those two positions. The final vote on there would be part of the record that would be kept as a, just like the, the vote count for another. The final vote on there would be part of the record that would be kept as a, just like the, the vote count for an election. So it's secret during the actual voting process, but the final tallies would have to be publicly, you could do a public records request the next day for the actual tallies from the secret votes.
Yeah, that, that's a good point because this, this process describes the ranked order method of selection of that person whom the board would vote to appoint. So the motion and action would be public.
Right.
Yeah, further on down, but I think Leslie is right that the, the actual ballots ultimately would have to be published as well. But let's not worry about that, if I may suggest, let's because I think it can be done. I think you can vote, the ballots could then be turned into the, the second, whoever's acting is the board secretary or the district clerk, who could then go through the process. And actually that could be made, once everybody has voted, the ballots could be publicly posted and dealt with from there. Where Mike concerned is that one director shouldn't know what the other director's planning doing. And I think we could, that's the main issue.
I mean, if.
Okay, I see, I saw a comment from Karen, I know, first Ted and then no Karen. Okay, Ted, yeah.
Well, I was just going to say, you know, if the semantics of secret are bothersome, maybe blind or individual, individually determined. I mean, you know, perhaps if the, if the, if you wanted to wordsmith and something out, because basically what you really want is the directors to write down their rank of order. You know, not on a immediately public basis, but eventually those numbers will have to be revealed. And at that point, there's nothing secret about it or nothing blind about it.
Yeah, so the ballots would, they'd have to be public, otherwise you couldn't go through the
Right.
Yeah. I, I'd leave it as is right now and let the board, if they, if they go with this, let them work out the details on that one. Yeah. Okay, no further comment from the committee? How about the public? Anybody want to weigh in on this? Okay, we're looking good. So I don't have anything further. What I would like to ask you, if you're, if you feel this is then ready to go forward, I think that would be the motion. But what I would like to do before sending it forward, and if you will permit me, I would go ahead and provide it with the appropriate numbering as, as to the paragraph numbering and everything else. Do you feel that you need to see it again before it goes to the board once I've done that? Are you happy with, do you trust me to do?
Give it a number.
Okay, do I see with, okay, having no objection on that. So is there a motion to adopt this and pass it to the board? Somebody?
I shall move.
Okay.
Claudia.
And seconded by John, moved by, two seconds, okay. Moved by Claudia and seconded by John Nixon to pass this policy and procedures for filling vacancies on the board of directors by appointment. Or, yeah, pass this on after renumbering.
Excellent.
Yeah, 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 excellent, okay. Pass it on to the board of directors. We're, we're good. Further discussion?
Need to vote?
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Gordon. That would include the amendment to that with the 10%.
Yeah, yeah, with the, with the 10%.
Right. And I'm just, I'm adding that phrase in now.
Right.
Excellent, so as, as amended or whatever.
As amended, yes.
As amended, okay. Okay, Haley, would you please call the role on this one?
Committee member Harmon. Yes. Committee member Key.
Aye.
Committee member Nixon.
Aye.
Committee member Heinrichs.
Yes.
Committee member Richards.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Oh, we're going pretty good here, okay. Yeah. So moving right along, the next item, item C, and this is more, this is going to be discussion, so we're not anticipating a vote. This is sort of in the nature of a committee report, but perhaps more and then also discussion. So this has to do with correspondence to the board of directors and most, more specifically, hold on a minute here, more specifically, stop, share. Sorry, I'm trying to get rid of the share. There we go, more specifically, what the hell was? Oh, who, who actually answers the correspondence? We kind of dealt earlier with an earlier paragraph as to receiving this correspondence, but the, the question and actually the reason I actually asked for this to come forward is because we often so many, often receive letters, which I personally, as only one board member, are not necessarily appropriate for me to answer. And yet I feel that all correspondence to the board should be answered somehow. So it was kind of from that's what was motivating me on this. So let's see, Claudia and Ted, right?
I'm, I'm just going to say a couple of things and then, you know, Claudia, if you'd like to take over. You know, what is, what has happened is I've been out of town for a while. So haven't had a chance to, to move forward too much with this and Claudia's had some issues going on and so. But we did talk this week and we have come to the conclusion that the first thing we need to do is a lot of fact finding. Fact find, you know, what, you know, what kind of letters, how many? You know, the, any process that's, that's in place. And then, and then from there, we can begin to, to move forward with policy. We also discussed the idea of, of policy and procedure. If there is a procedure in place, do we recommend changing that procedure or writing a procedure for adoption? And, and, and we have some fact finding to do and I know that Claudia has moved forward with some of that as well. And so I'll, I will turn the floor over to you Claudia to let folks know. You, you made an excellent list that you sent to me of, of, of questions and also to Haley. And I kind of doubt Haley's had an opportunity to do much with it so far, but that's okay, we, we have time. This could be a, this could be a bit of a ticklish one, so, you know, we really want to make sure we get our, you know, I's dotted and T's crossed, so go ahead Claudia, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ted.
Thanks Ted. Yeah, I did come up with a selection of questions which I sent to the board, to our committee, excuse me, and to Haley. And I did have a very brief conversation with her earlier and I, I could quickly read those questions and then Haley, do you have, can, you told me earlier that you might be able to answer some of the questions. And so if you could do that, that would be great, you know, whatever information you have and maybe John might have, be able to answer anything that we're not sure of. I will say in the beginning, there's no policy for such handling of this. And it was prompted by Amanda and I tried getting hold of Amanda, didn't quite get a hold of her, so I'm not quite sure what her concern is. I tell you, my, my biggest, I have several concerns, my biggest concern is that people are not getting their letters answered at all. Not who answers it or how they answer it, so, so that's secondary to, you know, getting them answered. And then the second very big problem, and I did talk at length with Harry as the president of the board. And that is that some board members will answer mail from, you know, to the board as individuals, but not CC the other members. And so something gets answered and no one ever knows what they said. Good or bad or indifferent or whatever. So those are issues that need to be, that are kind of primary in this. So Haley, do you want to, are you able to maybe answer a few of these questions or would you rather wait until next month?
Haley?
I, I could try to answer some of the questions you sent me in an email. One of your first questions was, how are emails to the board currently handled and is there formal policy in place? We currently don't have a policy in place and all emails that are addressed to the board of directors that are sent to my email or to the board comment at Cambria CSD email are read during public comments, are not forwarded to the board of directors. But if I do receive an email to the board comment email address that is not for a board meeting, I do forward it to the board of directors. So hopefully that answers your question for that one. The second question was, how is snail mail handled? Is there a screening process? Who opens mail address to the board? And my response to that was that our front desk gal provides me with all board correspondence and mail. And if I receive five different pieces of mail that are addressed to the board of directors, I'll open up one, scan the contents to the entire board and let them know that they have mail here at the district. Or I deliver that mail to them in their board binder for the next regular board meeting. And in that email I send to them, I also CC all the board members and the general manager. Your next question was, if one board member answers a general board email, are they required to CC copy the other directors? I'm not usually involved in that correspondence and I, I can't answer that question at that time. This next question was, how much mail is sent to the board as a whole per week and per month? I'm not sure exactly on the numbers, but it's not a lot of correspondence coming through the office. The next question was, what assurances are that the correspondence has been answered and how? I do not have an answer to that question at this time. The next question is, who has access to the board of directors' emails besides the directors? And my response is, the board of directors are the only individuals who have access to their emails. The next question is, do you or the GM sometime respond to the correspondence to the board? And my response to that is, I respond to members of the public's email who ask me to read comments addressed to the board of directors at board meetings. Otherwise I do not respond on behalf of the board of directors. And the last question was, any other information you have that will be helpful in writing this policy? I think I would need more time to answer that question, maybe at the next meeting. And, and that's all I have from that email. Hope that helps.
That's great, thank you very much. That answers quite a few questions and it also leaves some, some, leave some more questions. And I think some of the important, so how might we proceed to find out the answers to the, the couple that you have no answer for? There is no policy, well, you know, policy for all of this, but the, the couple of things that you can't answer and such as, you know, how do we know if some, if a board member copies the rest of board members and things like that? How do we, how do we find that out or is there access to that? Is there like a public records access or what would you suggest?
Yeah, anyone can submit a public record for anything directly related to board emails. They would just have to submit something to me and then I would process that within 10 days. I do not know what goes through their inbox, through their sent file or through their deleted files. So this would probably be something I'd have to run by Tim, our district counsel.
Other possibility, just a minute Ted, and then another possibility would be for you all to actually query each board member as to how they handle their email. Because so, some of that is really up to the person. So that might be, certainly would be appropriate. You can always talk to another board member and you could say, on behalf of this committee, we're working on this and could you help us out? No harm in that, just don't tell them what I said. So, yes Claudia, oh, I'm sorry.
I did, I did ask that question and to a board member and, and they mentioned another board member who answers mail, but they don't know what they say. And I, I think that was a very big concern of mine because, you know, I don't think we really should be, you know, our board should be doing that. And so, you know, I, I think it may, it may get some pushback, but I think that all mail directed to all the board needs to be, if anyone answers, it needs to be CC'd to the other board members and it should be CC probably to Haley and John Mybold too. I just think that, you know, we need to offer a more transparent board. And any mail that comes through the snail or email really needs to be publicly or some way, you know, you know, addressed to, to other, to other people, you know. It just, it just makes, it's really scary to think that board members are answering mail, you know, for the board as an individual. And, and Haley doesn't know what's going on. And the other, the other board member, I did talk to the president of the board, so he did, you know, he didn't know what's going on. He never gets copy, so, you know, that's a little scary, so, okay, go ahead, John.
Before John, Ted and then John.
My only comment, my only comment very simple, I said, I think we assume the answer is no, they don't copy all the other members and we will write a procedure or a part of the policy to, to, to address what Claudia is, is talking about. I don't, you know, I, I think we can just assume that, that not everybody is, is, is copying everybody else on everything. I, I think that would be unlikely, but it might, you know, it might be. Point is, I think that's where we write policy and possibly a procedure to go along with.
And John, before you chime in, I want to remind, there is one problem with, if I send a note to somebody and I copy all the other board members, that's a Brown Act violation.
Yeah.
So because I'm work, I could get myself a majority that way, you know, just by with, and, and behind the, the public wouldn't see it. That, the whole issue is, we can't have board members negotiating a majority behind the public, without of the public eye. So bearing that in mind, just keep that in mind as you go forward. Sorry, John, would you please go ahead and join in? I think we're all waiting here for you.
Yeah, Don, you beat me right to the punch. That was the issue I was going to bring up. The, the district council will, has it beaten into the directors that they should not even CC each other? Because as the email moves around, it, it creates the the, what's the word I'm looking for?
Illusion.
Illusion or, or the sense that there's some kind of coordination because they all know what everybody else is doing and it becomes a quasi, it comes a Brown Act violation really fast. But an idea Claudia, you might want to consider is, the board designate someone in those situations to answer. I, I would recommend the board president, but it, it could be the vice president, it could be, you know, somebody else designated in those situations. And it may be just as simple as, hey, I'm sorry, we can't group respond to you, I'm responding separately and can, can take questions one-on-one or something, something to that effect. But it, it's, it's really easy when they're all emailed together. I put on the top of my emails and if you do ever email the board as a whole, what I do is in all caps, right at the front of the top of the email, below the subject line, is I put, please do not reply to all. It's in all caps in bold and then I skip down, dear directors. And then I carry on with my email and they, that reminds them to not hit reply to all or lob in a thought or a comment. So, yeah, that's just my recommendation, a couple of thoughts.
Oh, thank you, John.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So, so guys, in terms of going forward, I'm watching my timer here. Yeah, Leslie, go ahead.
So on number six, there was this on Haley's presentation, she talked about board of directors responding. So the research that I'm doing right now, I've come across past boards and past documentation of dialogues going on on different servers. Not just the CCSD server, but private servers and business for the district going on private servers. Doesn't that have to be incorporated into this discussion as well? Because I know everybody has their CCSD public address, I don't know, right, email address. But I have documents showing responses by CCSD directors to outside agencies and they use their private actual home servers, not the CCSD servers and the dialogue in response. And there was no actual trail of that discussion until I got the actual emails from the agency. So there's a lot, this is very complicated and it can get even more complicated as time goes by on this. So I just want to give you a heads up that there has to be the definition of a letter coming in on a CCSD server should go out on the CCSD server in response as well, not on a private server because it needs to be tracked. Correct? Would that be an addition to this?
Thank you. Yeah, I, actually that's, that's not really part of this discussion, but it is part of the next discussion, which has to do with email policies. And there is in fact exactly verbiage, it's in statute, I think, actually. There is verbiage about exactly that.
This is correspondence to the public though, you were talking about email correspondence and snail mail.
Yeah, but in terms, yeah, not, not to argue with you, just to say that, that we're not forgetting that. Actually, and there needs to be a board policy explicitly regarding that. And the recommendation, it's not today, I don't. And the recommendation, it's not uh today, I don't think it's coming up, but it's going to come up, which is uh, I think there is actually verbiage in the email policy, uh, that directors that receive mail on another server must forward that mail to the district server. And uh, there are some others, so there are some guidelines and policies coming forth with exactly that. Because the directors really must not be using anything other than the district server to communicate with public agencies on board business. That is absolutely contrary uh to the whole public records policy. And if it's, if it's, what was done in the past, it's in the past, it's gone. We can't go crucify the folks who aren't here anymore. Uh, and, and we don't do ex post facto punishments anyway. So uh, but moving forward, this current board and any future boards need to be very, very cognizant of it. Cause there are some real pitfalls out there.
Yeah. This wasn't enough. We don't need any more 11-hour depositions from anybody, I don't think.
I don't think so.
Pretty bad.
Uh, so I, is there more on, I think, have we given you enough? I, I do have one que- oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead, Claudia.
Uh, just one quick thing, I think, uh, and, and John Weigold uh mentioned this and that, and I think it's very important that someone responds to these e- the emails that do to the board. And I personally, I think it should be the president of the board and he should write and say, we've got, we received your email and we will be responding, you know, very soon or something, you know, to that effect. And, or we will ha- handle it this way. Um, because like I said, one of the biggest problems that people, you know, people don't get an answer at all. And I think that uh, I, I think that we need to, it needs to be done quickly. Somebody emails the board, they should be answered that day or at least by the next day. Uh, so that, if we could even fix that right now, I think it would be really important to address that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you might want to think about doing this piecemeal. You might want to come up with a couple of paragraphs for one situation and deal with that and then move forward. Because we, it doesn't have to be all one package. Uh, let me see Haley, uh, pardon me for a minute, guys. I, I see that John Nixon has dropped out of the meeting. Can you call him, uh, Haley and make sure that he's, he's either having a technical problem or for some other reason he had to leave?
Yeah, I just got an email from him and he states that he lost his internet connection and he's trying to connect to the meeting on Verizon. So he's gonna keep trying to get back in.
Okay, well, okay. Uh, let's see, well, a- any further discussion on this one? Okay, I think we're good here. So I think you guys have uh.
Well, we'll get together real, Claudia, we'll get together real soon and start to thresh this out.
Excellent, excellent. And uh, John Weigold, do you have anything further uh that anyone that you could suggest that you'd like to have them talk to regarding this issue? Like yourself or Haley or somebody else? Is there anything you'd like to weigh in on how you'd like them to proceed with this?
Yeah, I can, I can talk separately. I mean, I don't have any additional thoughts right now. Um, I think reaching out to the board is real, you know, starting with the president, uh, maybe the vice president. I think that would be um highly recommended. Uh, because every board's gonna work a little differently and they have, some are better than others on administratively. So um.
Okay.
I, I, I'm with Claudia. I think, you know, the most important thing is letting somebody know that there's somebody on the other end.
Right.
Good. Uh, let's see, John, uh, when you dropped out, where were you? I, I want to make sure you didn't miss anything important.
Well, I'm, I'm sure I missed something important, but not necessarily something for the minutes be.
Okay.
It's, and I, I don't take all the, I apologize, my, you know, our internet just dropped. And I'm, I'm using a hotspot off my phone now, so.
Oh, okay. Well, it's, your phone seems to be up to the challenge here. It seems.
It is.
Okay. Uh, okay, I don't think there was nothing, you didn't miss anything that needs to be in the minutes and no vote was taken.
Right, right.
So we're good on that.
So I have no action. I did take, I, I took some notes and it's coming back on the next agenda, so.
Okay, good. Uh, and, and just to put a cap on that, uh, so uh Claudia and Ted, it certainly would be in order for you to consult other board members on this. The only thing you have to remember is don't tell one what the other said. But, but you can certainly ask, how do they handle their mail? What do they do? Do they do anything outside of the district server? You can ask the whole thing. As long as they're willing to give you, you know, I don't think they would refuse to talk to you. So anyway, I encourage you to, and, and again, I don't know, uh, think about doing it piecemeal. Deal, you know, because you, you've actually separated a number of interesting questions that could be dealt with separately. So I'd say, take it in bites. And uh, as you said, what, eat the elephant the same way you eat a hamburger. One bite at a time. So you're doing good, very good. Uh, let's see, any further, is there any further public comment on this before we move on? Okay, uh, the next item is uh, the item A. Okay, this is discussion and consideration regarding the CCSD records retention and email management policies. Uh, so uh, John, I turn this over to you for presenting.
All right, well, Ted and I discussed this uh topic as for, for potential policy. And then because we're not as smart as we think we are, we consulted with Haley. And who has responsibility for uh a lot of what would go into such a policy. And so based on our discussion with Haley and, and our own research into um some local agency policies as well as the CSDA uh example policies, the, the conclusion was that we should simply uh adapt or adopt the CSDA policy on records retention and a companion policy on electronic um uh email uh records retention and records management. So what you have with the agenda are essentially uh with a couple of minor changes that, that reflect CCSD. Um, those policies as presented through the CSDA manual. A, a couple of other points, a, a large part of records retention also includes uh process or schedule for records destruction, you know, how long you keep them. And then when you've kept them that long, then you can destroy them. So if, if this committee approves this policy as a recommendation or some other policy as a recommendation, um, I, I think in this case, staff, particularly Haley or, or anyone else needs to really review this because so much of it is about what records are kept and when can they be destroyed? Um, if, and some can't ever be destroyed, some can. So I, I, I think we're recommending as well that if the committee passes forward this, these recommendations for two policies, that, that staff really go over them carefully before they would then go to the board as a recommendation, as recommendation.
Okay.
Ted, is that fair to say?
Yeah, very fair to say.
All right, thank you, Ted. Uh, yeah, Claudia.
Um, you, you're saying staff, what staff, are you talking about Carmel or are you talking about?
I'm talking, well, first of all, John Weigold decided which staff, but clearly um Haley is one of the key staff in relationship to this topic. So John would decide.
Okay.
I would think. And, and of course, I don't think the board has, passes any policy without having council look at it at some point, so.
Okay.
Right. Uh, oh, Leslie?
So um, did this committee review the previous, their policy that they have on file now? CCSD's policy from uh resolution from forty-four, two thousand thirteen?
At length. And, and the conclusion was that let's just start over with the model policy from CSDA.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, any other questions or clarifications? Uh, do we have any public comment on this issue? Uh, Haley, I, I don't see any. Do you see anything or do we have any written comment, Haley?
I do not have any written public comment at this time.
Oh, thank you, Haley.
And let me also add, I, it shows that a lot of this is, is the policy itself is also drawn from state code. If not federal code, actually, some of it, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's very highly constrained, you know, definitely. Um, any, any comments? I, I do have some myself, but let's, let me hear others. Uh, yes, Gordon.
I just had a question, if you're gonna delete duplicates and things of that nature out of the, the office things, how secure is our backup system where these are going into for permanent?
Good question. I don't have an answer to that, but that's a question that probably we should consider.
Well, it's a, it's a process and an implementation question, not a policy question, but.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, it is the case that we do have a document storage uh company that stores our documents and provides us access to them. I don't know exactly how the access is, is achieved. Uh, and we do pay a certain amount per month. It's presently up to over $500 a month for storage and access. And this largely paper, as far as I can determine. In terms of electronic uh things that are on our server, uh, that is backed up quite regularly. And we, in fact, we had a recent data breach and had to, uh, had to recover. But those, those backups are very frequent. Uh, I, I, I have great confidence that at least the stuff on our server is definitely safe. I mean, short of the destruction of civilization or something, it's likely to always be there. Uh, I think, John, you, you came on, did you have something you wish to say, John?
Oh, I just wanted to correct uh your um review or, or your description of, of our uh system issue. It wasn't a data breach, it was a ransomware attack where they just.
Sorry, yeah, wrong.
Any data or anything, so don't be worried on that.
Thank you. That's an important distinction too. Uh, thank you for catching me on that. Yes, there was no breach, nothing was compromised. Make, make sure that that, everybody in the world knows that. We were, we were safe and nothing was compromised, but we were hacked. And, and it was a kind of a ransomware uh situation. Fortunately, we had, we didn't have to pay him anything and we were able to.
Get stuffed and restored your system.
I, I do have some comments regarding this, yeah.
One quick question, um, you said you're paying somebody $500 a month to store your paper uh documents. Why isn't somebody scanning those and then not paying the $500 a month?
I, I don't have an answer to that, but maybe that's something we can learn more about, you know?
Well, in, in today, in today's day and age, all that, you know, we should not be storing paper. We should be making that all electronic. And uh, if you do it on a daily basis, like you back up the, uh, the computer generated mail or correspondence and um documents, whatever, then uh that could be scanned, those could be scanned every day too. Is that an issue?
I don't know. Uh, John, I guess this is a, John Weigold, I think it's a question for you.
Yeah, no, we're, we're doing that on an ongoing basis now. Um, but we have, we have a lot of historic stuff that, that's out. We're, we're talking, the volume is.
Oh my god.
Yeah.
Immense volume of what we're required to, just on the accounting side, that's a whole different rule set than we're talking about from an email standpoint, you know, you, they have to be, you know, retained for years. Like seven years on most documents. So um, uh, and some, there are some requirements for paper copies, I think, too, still out there.
Yes.
Don?
Oh, I see Leslie over here. Yeah, Leslie.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up. The financials require seven-year hard copy documentation. You can't scan that. It has to be paper docu. That's all we have, the docu center. And like a, uh, it's a majority, I think, of what's over at the actual storage facility is the historical financials. So um, cause I know that Melissa supposedly was focusing on scanning just about everything from current forward and then rotating back to the historical data in the past. So, yeah, we have to have certain things on paper, hard copy. We have no choice. That's the problem. It would be nice if we did, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, oh, thank you, Leslie. So um, everyone has had their say pretty much? Okay, uh, yeah, I have a couple of some comments. Uh, and I, I guess the upshot of what I'm gonna say is uh there's some only very minor changes to uh the, the draft that you guys uh have given us. But um, how can I say this? Let me see. Looking for my notes. Oh, here, um. However, there's some areas in there that, that aren't there. And I kind of feel that maybe I should have stayed more engaged with you guys. Uh, so I'm apologizing in advance. Uh, my, generally I try to keep out of your discussions because again, I, I have too much influence anyway. I, and what we really want is to have uh more coming up. So I purposely really kind of didn't really look through what you sent because it wasn't directed to me. And, and until very recently, and so uh, had I been a little more engaged, I, I would have brought some of this up to you as a subcommittee. It's not by any means criticism, it's just that uh, there's an area that we didn't quite get into uh, which I think probably needs to be addressed uh in, in comparing the old policy and the new and what you're proposing, which by the way, I like. I think you're, we're on the right track. I like the CSDA, uh, what they've done. It's, it's clear, uh, every, everything is very good. Uh, however, there's some missing material that I think I, as a board member would like to see. And it has to do, if, I can actually bring it up for you, but I don't know that I need to at this point. In the old policy, uh, starting at about, um, where was it? Well, trying to see if I can briefly do this. There are two things that we still don't have that probably need to be there. I guess what I really do need to do, I do need to bring up the code. Let me bring up the code here for a second.
Which one are you bringing up? The two thousand eleven or two thousand?
No, this is, uh, I'm talking now about the two thousand fourteen, which is the current policy. And uh, and then I'm gonna bring up the code here in a minute and then let me share it.
Okay, but the two thousand fourteen builds off the two thousand eleven policy. You have that both, Don. You only have one there in front of you?
Leslie, they're actually pretty much a duplicate. I have them both.
Okay.
The part I'm talking about though, uh, first I wanted to bring up the code, so let me share my screen. Okay, can you see it? Everybody can see it?
It's too small, the ring.
Well, let me make it bigger. Hold on.
Fourteen, that's the fourteen.
Actually, this was also, uh, I think this was in our current, uh, but anyway, this is just the government code. And the only reason I want to show it to you, if I can just get the. Oh, here, I can zoom it. Okay, hold on a second. Tell me when you can see it. Is that big enough?
Not yet.
Still, yeah, hold on.
There you're getting, that's good.
This down so I can see you guys. Okay, here's what I'm talking about. It's, it has to do two things. Um, it has to do with the procedure. Where can I get this to work? Still trying to get this, oh, here is, pardon me, I'm still playing with my computer. There we are. Okay, now you can see, you should be able to see the whole thing. Uh, yeah, okay. Uh, the issue has to do with the actual schedule of retention and the actual process and the, and the way in which the board authorizes the destruction. Because there's a whole lot of stuff in there about how the board needs to authorize the destruction of various categories. And so if you look here, uh, it says, uh, you see here sixty, sixty twenty, uh, six oh, two oh one. And you look at paragraph B, it says that we can dispose of anything not expressly required to be filed and preserved through either of these two fa- either of these following procedures. And one is we can authorize the destruction, provided we adopt a resolution finding that the destruction won't adverse, in other words, we have to actually do that. And we have to maintain a list by category of the types of records that have been destroyed or just disposed and the information contained. We can do that. And, and actually you will find this uh in the old, in, in the old policy as to how, uh, you know, it's, it's been using slightly different words, but you'll see that there is this, this uh information. And then this, or the board can adopt by a res- by a resolution, can establish a record retention schedule. So what we have to, what we need and what's missing i- in the old policy, there was a retention schedule. In the new. In the new policy, we're almost there, but it needs to be, we might make sure that that's very clear. It needs to, it needs to include a retention schedule. Otherwise, we cannot follow this second thing at all. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So, as long as I've got sharing screens and everything, I'm going to show you the old policy. Come on. Retention. Here's, okay. I think this is.
The destroyed projects. Have you seen them?
Here it is. I think this is it. Let me see if I've got it. No, this isn't it. Sorry. It's in our, it's in the agenda here. Let me pull the agenda packet up. Okay. Well, darn it all. I had it here for you so you could, let me look one more time. Contention statute.
Don, have you reviewed the list? Have you ever seen this list of category of destroyed bud? You have. Is it a public record? Can we request the list?
But it's, yeah, it's in the agenda packet for the, the last, the board meeting before last, I think.
It was in the agenda packets of documents destroyed?
No. Oh, oh, I'm getting to that. Okay. At the moment, you guys are going to have to take my word for it. There's a whole section in the old policy that basically says that on an annual basis, the staff will come up with a list of categories of records to be destroyed and the contents. I presume it means a general thing. It's not altogether very clear on that. And that that has to be presented to the board and passed by the board. So, records cannot be destroyed unless, at least according to the old policy. And it's actually, if you read the old policy, it is both the records which are not required, that which I was just referring to you in the code, but also records which do have other, that are part of public records and do have some other additional requirements. In any case, what's missing then is, is a procedure whereby the board can authorize in some fashion the destruction of records. And the other thing that we need to have is the, a clear document retention schedule. The one that's in the CCSDA handbook is pretty good. But again, there's one thing which is missing, which I suggest that maybe we should consider is that in the CSDA, Appendix A, so that'll be in your packet, under its, a set of definitions. And under item 11, vital records, there's a little parenthesis that says that under this category, we should be, we should detail the record structure of the district and state the retention time for each class of records. And that those times can be drawn from recommendations to the Secretary of State or developed with the advice of legal counsel, et cetera. So, everything that's there is good, but what's, what we still need and what the board will be looking for is that procedure is how a, a clear indication, I, I think the item, what is it? B, Appendix B is a, a records retention schedule, according to the CSDA handbook. So, I think maybe the policy needs to make reference to that. And the other thing I would suggest is that we do need to kind of clarify what documents fall into which groups.
So, so, Don?
We're not quite ready yet, in other words, but it's my fault.
Well, I agree, I agree with you, but what you're saying is what I thought I meant when I said this committee passes a recommendation forward to staff. Because what you want to have included, I don't have competency to do, but the staff would. And so that's what I meant by the intermediary step between this committee and the board. In this case, having staff actually embellish appropriately what we're presenting, because I don't have the competency to do that. That's why.
I think I see what you're saying. Yeah, Ted?
My, my question too is, what has been going on currently? I mean, if there's a, if there's a procedure that's been going on, you know, has that been going on and, and what would be the commentary from staff on the procedure that, that has been in place?
Well, as my understanding, and maybe we need to check this from Amanda, is that the staff, we have not, they have not, this has not been done for several years, certainly not since, not in the last two years. I can tell you that for sure. So, whatever, had, whatever, there, the answer to your question is it's not being done right now.
Okay.
In fact, I think it's one of the reasons it came before the board originally is because that has to do a lot with the expense of maintaining some of the paper records. That's the 500 plus dollars a month that I was referring to. So, yeah, it is an open question. Leslie, I see you in just a second. Yeah, go ahead, Leslie.
Don, can you do me a favor? Can you formalize the, your statements are fantastic, but you've said so much. Can you formalize it in an email? Can you, can you get this out to the committee here as exactly what you're asking on this? A, B, I remember exactly what Amanda brought this up to the board because she was at the San Simeon CSD meeting when they went ahead and purged their files over at San Simeon CSD two years ago. And she thought it was a great idea that we go ahead and purge our files as well. And it came back to the board and then this, this, this has not, this procedure since 2014, I have never seen this in an agenda packet, period. And so she had said she had been sitting in on the San Simeon meeting. They had redone their entire policy code on emailed and our records detention. And they were doing a massive purge at San Simeon. And it would be a good idea for us to do a massive purge and go through our file room and do our files as well. But nothing came of it. She did bring it up at the board meeting, but there was no action taken on any of this. And this is prior to your time on the CCSD. So, but on that particular document, me, Hallie can answer this question. I have never seen this on an agenda since 2014. I don't recall ever seeing a records detention destruction policy brought forward. Have, has anybody else who's been watching?
Yeah.
But I'll see them.
Yeah, I can tell you exactly. Let me see, I think. I don't want to take too much time, but. Think is this it?
What is Hallie still?
It was, it was agenda item 6D on the May 14th, the May 14th board meeting. So, that, that has the complete packet, including the old policy, the statute and a, a, actually the, prior to John and Ted's looking at it, the actual CSDA policy as well. So, that's all in that agenda packet. But I can do that. I, I think the question here is how would we proceed? If you guys don't mind, I know you've done a bit, a good bit of work on this. Whoa. Is that Claudia? Okay, you're going away and Claudia is going away in one minute. Can, can we bring this up again at, at the next meeting? And let me, and let me talk to Ted and John. Do you mind if we talk together further on this?
Of course not.
Okay, if, if, if you're agreeable to that and the rest of the committee doesn't mind, I'd like to go ahead and meet with John and Ted and kind of move this forward. And I'll take a little more active role, at least in, in seeing that the, not necessarily the content, but making sure that we're covering all the bases that I think are important anyway. Is that, if that's agreeable with everyone?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'll get in touch with you all later. That'll be on my to do list. Okay, and Claudia, thank you. Thank you, Claudia. She's going to her, I see she's going to her ballet thing there. Okay, Claudia, thank you. I'm sorry. Yeah, there you go. Look, she's gone. Yeah, okay, so she had a ballet thing that was starting. And John, you have to, I think is, yeah, John, you had to leave in five minutes, right?
Not, not me.
Somebody else has to go early. Oh, Leslie has to go. Sorry.
No, not me. No.
To go at quarter after. Oh, well, okay. One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Yeah, we still have a quorum. Okay, if it's, if it's agreeable, then I'd like to go ahead and, and work, work this through just a little more. And I think I could profit from listening to what you guys were saying. I think you can.
Well, we can, we'll, let's schedule a time. We'll do that.
Yeah, okay. Let me get in touch with you either later on today or tomorrow, maybe.
Sure.
Because, okay.
Well, you can email anytime, you know.
Okay. I'll start up, I'll, I'll start up the, I'll just say, Don, to me was. Okay, I, so what I'll do now, yeah, let me just, I think we can close early here. We have one more thing to discuss. But yeah, so I'll meet with, so where we're leaving this one is that I'm going to meet with, with the, the subcommittee and we'll just work a little further on it and possibly bring in some input from staff, which I think is what you were saying, John, is that.
Yeah.
Probably need to, to get with them as well and make sure that we've got this. Okay, great. My only concern actually, I think the issue, and they don't really talk about it in the, in the CSDA stuff, is that in planning, when everybody's play, when everybody's behaving themselves and going all in the same direction, problems don't arise, but I could see issues where staff, and I've seen other cases where this happens, where someone just decides they go shredder happy and start shredding everything in sight. It's happened to happen here and I don't think it will. But it's something that I. In some way. That Gordon, is that you?
Turn this volume up.
Okay. Anyway, thank you. So, I'll get in touch with you guys and we'll go forward with that. But thank you for everything so far. Our last item will be. It's the, the mission, mission statement. If you wish to make a discussion there or else we can just move forward and to, to future agenda items.
Well, how, if we're expected to, to collectively vote on a mission statement, we, we, at some point, we have three or four versions in front of us. So, we've had that, right? Whether we take action this afternoon or not, I, I don't, doesn't matter, but at some point, don't we have to, this has been on the agenda for three times.
I'm getting tired seeing this on the agenda. Next time, let's, we'll do it first thing.
Okay.
He said, I've been saying that before. Okay, but keep me honest on that one. And Leslie, we still haven't got a statement from you. So, if you choose to have one, you got another month to come up with it. We're each looking for like a one or two sentence statement. Yeah, Gordon and then Leslie.
Clarify that I wasn't going to do that. You go into their words and let's go for it. Sorry, told you, no, I wasn't going to send you one. You've already got five on there. And I don't think you need to add my two cents. And then I'm, I'm more than happy to pick what's on that page. So, thank you.
Just wanted to be sure. Didn't want to leave anybody out. Gordon, you had something you wanted to say.
Well, if we were going to have discussion, consideration of the mission statements, wouldn't that be attached to the agenda? It is, remember seeing it on my packet here.
Item D.
I know that, but it's not, the list of the statement, is it?
Should be attached as an attachment. It should be there.
It's the last page.
Very last attachment. It's one page.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Paper.
Yep, it didn't get continued. Okay, thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Well, I think that since we can, we can go ahead and postpone this until next time. But I think that if, if we can't manage by next time, we should just declare a victory and move forward. So, if you're, if you're all in agreement, we'll try to, I think we can deal with it fairly quickly, actually. But it might be better if we were all present. Yeah, yeah, Gordon.
Claudia now, and she had a lot of input on the mission statement. I think was the first one to put something before we even asked for it. So, I think it would be in her interest to be present, put this on the first agenda, instead of the last.
Good, okay, Ted?
Um, I just wondered if everybody's, if everybody's read everybody else's.
I read it.
I did.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so it, it could be, we'll meditate on it for another month and and then we'll, we'll just go from there. And, but I think we could probably deal with it pretty quickly. So, and I apologize to keep bringing this back and then kicking it down the road. Let's see, I think that future agenda items.
I think we have enough for the next meeting.
You said so. Or Leslie, yeah.
So, I saw on the, on the line by line packet for the payout that resources and facilities bought a bunch of cameras. And I just wonder if you knew where those cameras were being installed for facility and resources.
Well, yeah, go ahead.
I'm just asking you, Don, do you know where those cameras are being installed? Are they for East West Ranch cameras? Where are they being installed? $1,200 worth of cameras is a lot of hidden cameras. So, why is facility and resources buying a lot of cameras? Do you know?
Thank you for asking that. I had a little question about that myself. That was asked at a board meeting. Unfortunately, I do not remember the exact answer. But I still kind of have a question because again, I, I'm a little really sensitive about the surveillance society. So, I, I would actually want to know where those cameras are and I will probably bring that up or I'll, I'll ask Carlos separately. And John, yeah, I think you need to be aware, we need to know where those cameras are. John Weigle, talking to.
We already have 22 cameras on the EWS. We already have a series of hidden cameras all over the place and there's signage on the fencing around the EWS and says you're under video surveillance. We don't have any video surveillance policy. So, couldn't that be a good agenda item to have?
There you are. Thank you. That's what we wanted. Okay. Okay, for future agenda, somewhere, some future agenda will be video surveillance policy. Anybody else have any, just a second. John Weigle, you came up. So, did you want to comment on that?
Oh, I was just going to add that those cameras are for the ranch that were recently purchased.
That was my understanding too.
But that was, you know, that was, yeah, a result of some issues we were having over there and it was in conjunction with the, with the friends.
Oh, the friends of the Fiscalini Ranch? Yeah, I kind of figured, but it would be good to, I don't know that we need to do it. I, that, that's something I, as a board member, I'd like to get a little more of an answer. I, I know that Carlos did say that, that was for the ranch because it had come up on, in a board meeting. But I think a little more detail might be useful there. Leslie, yeah?
Okay, so I've gone through the ranch the last couple of days and there's no signs on the ranch saying you're under video surveillance. So, if those are for the ranch, there better be some signage put up showing that you are under because you, you privately, I mean, there's a question mark here of legality of going ahead and actually video surveillancing areas of the ranch. It's public property, public open space. So, I'm assuming there's signage that's going to be going up, yes, with the actual video surveillance on the ranch? But combination of both or not? I'm just curious. From Mr. Weigle.
I do not know the answer to that. I just asked.
Okay, so, so Leslie, that's an open issue. We'll just keep pursuing that. Thank you for bringing that up. Anybody else? Future agenda? I'm, I'm going to get you guys out of here quick, I think. Anybody? No more. I'll look and see. I think what, again, what I'm going to try to do is in the next few days, after I've listened to this meeting and kind of digested everything, I'm going to try to come up as I've done before, giving you tentative agendas for the next three months so that we kind of know where we're headed. And that's your opportunity to say, oh, my God, Don, that's way too much. Or why on earth are we not talking about X or Y sooner? So, that's your chance to weigh in on that. So, I'm just warning you, I'll be sending that out. And the main thing there is just so we have kind of a work plan as we go forward. Remembering that this is actually, this is going to be a, I do not think that we are, this task of getting a whole policy manual all beautifully numbered and arranged with all of the district's policies reviewed and in there. This isn't, that is not something that's going to happen soon. Just, it's just a very, very big job. And so, we should be happy with what we do accomplish and not worry about it.
We are.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, Ted?
Well, I, you know, what's, what's happening is that, you know, we sort of initially started out at page one and we're going to move through. And, you know, the best laid plans of mice and men often have things coming out of left field at us. And that's what's, what's happening now.
Yeah, yeah. No, we're, we're doing good. I think we're, we're, we're kind of finding our way through here. No, we're, we're doing good. I think we're, we're kind of finding our way through here. What is, and it's kind of tricky to know exactly what to do and how to proceed. So I'm feeling a little more comfortable, I think, as we go forward. And I kind of feel perhaps I haven't given the subcommittee, the ad hoc committees as much guidance as I should. So if you feel that you're not, you don't know why you're doing what you're doing, or if you want more input from me, I think you should probably ask me. You know, because again, I don't want to insert myself more than necessary. But on the other hand, if you feel like I'm not clear or you're kind of wondering, what have I asked you? Or, or how am I going to react to something? You should ask me. And normally, so when you copy me, as you're, I do love to see what you're sending back and forth. But I think you do need to, if you want me to comment on it, you probably should ask me to comment on it, so that I know that, that you really, you're not just keeping me in the loop, but you really want something from me. Yeah, Leslie?
You brought this up multiple times now. I, I think you're doing a fantastic job being in the loop. So I don't understand where you're coming from on this, by the way. And yeah, it's very difficult. This is a very difficult task. We, we, a lot do. And I think everybody in this group, there's no feeding flowers in this group, Don. If anyone's going to come forward, going to come forward and say to you. So I don't think you're getting too deeply involved or not involved or anything else. You're busy with other things going on. So it's all, it's all good. This is all good. I think we're all moving forward. This doesn't go as quickly as we all anticipated, but that's the nature of the beast here. So I'm happy.
No, I agree. I agree.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ted has a comment.
Um, I don't, yeah, I'm, I guess I'm a little bit confused, too. What, is there a yardstick here? Are the other committees doing more work, less work? Do we, I mean, are we, are we lagging or are we on the mark?
No, I don't think we're lagging. That's, I'm thinking, thank you for bringing that up, though, because the one thing now, I've been on the RNI committee. I have avoided the finance committee. So, but what is very clear is that the whole universe that each committee is dealing with is so distinct that you really can't compare. Yeah, in fact, in my opinion, I found this committee to be, this work much more difficult than working with resources and infrastructure.
Well, there's, there's quite a difference in the sense the finance committee and to a large extent, the resources. And, and we're not tied to calendar decisions in the same ways.
Right, right. Yeah, it's, it's completely different. So yeah, we can't really judge ourselves by what the others are doing. But as I, I, so Leslie, I appreciate, but I do want to keep encouraging people. I'm trying to keep, I have certain things that I'd like to see, but I don't want to be, be overbearing about it. Or, because the whole value is, as I've told you before, I know what I think. Of course, I change my mind often, but I really need to hear what others think. So I appreciate that. Any other future agenda items before we close up here? Okay, I think we're doing well. We are right on time here. And so our next meeting will be, it's the, okay, it's the third Thursday of
August.
Fourth Thursday, last Thursday. I think it's the 27th or something, but we're still at 2:30. And if folks can't make it, or if you got a quick change, I mean, do let me know, because I think it's so important that we have a full committee to talk about these things. Then we can always schedule it. We can always cancel the regular one and have a special one if we need to. So do let me know if, and we, we can almost do it up to the very last minute, you know, of posting. Yeah, yeah, Leslie.
A quick question. Can the, can the meetings you were going to talk about for Zoom meetings, when we get groups of outside people that want to come in and talk to us about this, can we do it as like a workshop possibly? Can we coordinate it as a different context? You want us to get information about, you know, the homeless situation? So.
Yeah, I think we could do something there. Why don't you talk to me offline, you know, or, or work? Yes, I think some, anything you can do to get more people involved and more people's input, the better. So yeah, we could do something like that.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, there's nothing in our bylaws that says we can't. Well, we'll see, you know, and, and right now, there's very little overhead involved in these. The main overhead would be right now is involving Haley and, oh, Haley had to leave. That was the other.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, Haley. I guess we better, if she's still there, we better let her go.
No, she's on, she's on with a district call, with a district council call.
Oh, okay. Please give her my apologies. I really wanted to end before she left. So, so guys, any, any further parting shots before we, before I say goodbye?
That's it. I'm going to send, I'll send out the amended policy that we approved on the filling of vacancies. Because I added, I added the phrase, you know.
Great, John. Yeah, so yeah, if you send that to me, and I'll go ahead and forward it to the, yeah, board, I think.
I, I would like to commend Leslie for her work on this homeless issue. It's a monster.
Oh, it's, it's the more you dig, the bigger it gets.
It just appears like a real monster, and I know Leslie is more than capable of getting to the bottom of it.
Yeah, and I will say, as a kind of a parting shot on that one, even though it may or may not be within the CCSD's purview, but it is the case that I think over the next several months, the situation is only going to get worse.
Oh.
It's going to get really, really bad. So, yeah. So anyway, but thank you all. It's wonderful. You all, you're all healthy. I'm glad to see it. And I look forward to our next meeting. And remember, if you want me to help you Zoom, or you want to Zoom on my account, you know, I'm more than happy to do it, and I can always just put my computer, you know, to get you going. And then what I do is just leave the room and minimize the thing, so I'm not part of the meeting. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your work. So, yeah, and thank you. Here we go. Bye-bye.